Good evening, everyone. We are ready to begin. The Planning Commission meeting is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. We're live on KCLV Channel 2, and this meeting will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 a.m., the following Monday at midnight, and Tuesday at 5:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Chair Moody?
Here.
Vice Chair Schlotman?
Present.
Commissioner Goines?
Present.
Commissioner Druzdell?
Present.
Commissioner Quinn?
Here.
Commissioner Flengus?
Here.
Commissioner Bonar? He's excused. Thank you.
Thank you. I call your attention to the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions and the appeal and review process, if appropriate. Please read this carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available. Also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct. We appreciate you adhering to these rules so that we can have a smooth meeting. Thank you. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion, as well as the amount of time of any speaker is allowed -- that any speaker is allowed may be limited. All comments made under this item for specific action will be cross-referenced to those items. Are there members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda? Sir? Or do you -- you wish to be heard on a specific item? Okay, we'll call those later. Thank you. We will move on to Item 5 for possible action to approve the final minutes for the meeting of previous Planning Commission meetings. I'd like to begin with the January 13, 2015 meetings. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the January 13, 2015 minutes.
Okay, thank you very much. Will you please vote on that motion? Please post. That motion carries, and the Planning Commission meeting minutes of January 13, 2015 are approved. Can I also have a motion to approve the Planning Commission meeting minutes of February 10, 2015, noting that Commissioner Flengus -- I assume you want to abstain?
Thank you, Commissioner. That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the minutes from the February 15, 2015 Planning Commission hearing.
Okay, motion is made. Please vote. And please post. That motion also carries. The minutes of February 10, 2015 are approved. Any items from the Planning Commission, staff and/or the applicant, wish to be stricken or held in abeyance to a future meeting, may be brought forward and acted upon at this time.
Mr. Chairman, the following items have been requested to be held in abeyance to the April 14, 2015 Planning Commission meeting. Items 15 through 18, VAR 57010, WVR 57009, WVR 57212, and TMP 57007. Items number 19 through 22, VAR 57017, WVR 57018, WVR 57213, and TMP 57025. Please note that this is the third request made by the applicant for the items to be held in abeyance, and the Planning Commission must make a finding that good cause has been shown for why the granting of the additional continuance is warranted. Also, Item number 33, SUP 57687. The following item has been requested to be held in abeyance to the May 12, 2015 Planning Commission meeting. Items 36 and 37, SUP 57330 and 57331. The following item has been requested to be withdrawn without prejudice from the agenda, Item number 14, SUP 55682. And the following items have been requested to be struck from the agenda. Item number 11, VAC 57676, and Item number 43, TXT 51723. Thank you.
Thank you. And can I just ask you to repeat the items that need a four-cause finding?
Mr. Chairman, those would be Items 15 through 18 and Items 19 through 22.
Okay, great. And is an applicant here on those items so that we can make a record on the four-cause?
Oh, I'm not here on the four-cause items.
Okay.
I have a quick question. Bob Gronhour, 8345 West Sunset Road. I didn't know if I heard Item 36 and 37. Did staff mention something on those items?
No.
All right, okay. I just wanted to make sure. Bad hearing in the back, I guess.
Okay.
Sorry.
So, Mr. Gronhour, those are on the agenda, and we'll go forward tonight. Am I wrong? No, you -- I'm correct. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so, let's begin with Items 15 through 18 and 19 through 22 to establish cause for an abeyance. Who wishes to make that record?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, on the way up here. I had spoke with the President of the NARA, who had just mentioned to me that they thought these items were being held, so I don't know if anybody from that organization is here.
Come on up, sir.
Do we have a reason why there -- yeah, if we have an applicant here that can explain why these are being held?
My name's Richard Burney. We've been working on this with the NARA.
Could you please speak into the mic and state your name again and address?
It's Rick Burney, BERNI 5701 Patricia Avenue, directly adjacent to it. We're in the group NARA, and we've had continual talks and abeyances on this, back and forth with Slater Hanafin, with the owners and everything. And we got word just an hour or two ago that the Planning Commission was abating the meeting based on some things. We were planning to come in here and go along with them on the no sidewalks and no streetlights in the area. And we were going to show up. They were trying to put a ninth home in and reduce the lot size just a tad bit.
We don't need to go into the details about the application?
Yeah, well, you do, because that's why this meeting was supposed to be abated tonight, because they wanted to go back and forth with the city council whether it was going to be a variance or a zoning change.
Okay, great.
That was our understanding last minute, so we're just here to make sure.
Thank you.
Anything else we need?
And I appreciate you sticking around so that we can clear this up. Does either staff or the director wish to be heard? I believe this was posted as an abeyance item. Is that correct?
I believe so. The justification on record states that the applicant is requesting to be held in abeyance for additional time to work with the surrounding neighbors and city staff in further developing the project. We are in discussions with them of potential modifications to current applications or additional applications, depending on what revisions are being proposed.
Thank you. Commissioner, go ahead.
And through you, Mr. Chair, that sounds exactly like what staff just said and the gentleman said. There was an issue of one of those -- I don't know if it's the Leon Lot to go up to nine parcels where they wanted eight, and so -- and I was over there last night at about 7:30 talking with a few neighbors off of Leon Street, and that would seem to be the sentiment out there as well.
Would you like to make the motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. On Items 15 through --
Excuse me. Can we make one motion as part of the all items for possible action?
So, Items 15 through 18 and 19 through 22 need a motion for cause, so that's what we're doing right now.
Yeah, that's a total -- that's for the Clerk's office, Mr. Chairman. That's a totally separate action because of the fact that they asked to be abated on the third time, so that has to show four cause. So, if we can take --
We're getting to those.
Mr. Chairman, if we could just maybe take the items in order. If you can go through the -- one motion, one -- I'm sorry, go through the items that just can be obeyed, and then we'll do the four cause after that.
Okay, very good. Okay. Then I'll ask the Vice Chair to make a motion on all items but 15 through 18 and 19 through 22. Correct.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on Item 33 to hold it to the May 12 Planning Commission hearing, and for Item number 14, withdraw.
Mr. Chairman, for a point of clarification, Item 33 was requested to be held to the April 14, 2015 Planning Commission meeting.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'll revise my motion. Item 33, we make a motion to hold in abeyance until the April 14 Planning Commission hearing and withdraw without prejudice, Item number 14.
Okay. We've also got Items 11 and 23, 24, and 35.
Maybe either just to go in order. Why don't we just go start with Number 11 and then work our way down?
Okay.
Thanks.
So, let's take individual motions, because there are some that need a motion to strike, one to be withdrawn without prejudice, and some for abeyance. So, I like that idea. Let's start with Item 11.
Excuse me, Chair, could we just take one on those one items? If you would like, I could read the items.
It's just getting too confusing, Gabby. Why don't we just go -- excuse me, why don't we just go through Number 11 and just keep going down? And that it's just because they have different dates and different times, and let's just if we can just go Number 11 and just work our way down. It'd be easier.
Okay. So, Vice Chair, Item 11.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. On Item number 11, I move to strike this item from our agenda.
Okay, motion is made to strike Item 11. Please vote. Okay, motion to strike carries. Item 14.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Item number 14, I make a motion to withdraw this application without prejudice.
Motion to withdraw without prejudice, Item 14 carries. Let's skip down to Items 23 and 24.
Mr. Chairman, Items number 23 and 24, I make a motion to hold these two items in abeyance until the May 12, 2015 Planning Commission meeting.
Okay. Motion is made to obey Items 23 and 24 until the May Planning Commission meeting. Please vote. That motion carries. Item 33.
Mr. Chairman, on Item 33, I would make a motion to hold this item until the April 14, 2015 Planning Commission hearing.
Okay, motion is made to obey Item 33 until next month's Planning Commission meeting. Please vote. That motion carries. Item 35.
Mr. Chairman, Item number 35, I make a motion for this item to be stricken from our Planning Commission agenda.
Okay, the motion is to strike Item 35. Please vote. Please post. That motion carries. Now, we are at Items 15 through 18 and 19 through 22. There was discussion had earlier, and a motion was made by Commissioner Goines to obey those items until next month's Planning Commission meeting for cause.
And, Mr. Chairman, if you've deemed that they're to be sufficient cause, you can just indicate that in the motion and then vote accordingly.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, before we vote on this motion, I think the applicant needs to be aware that if they need more time, they should take the time now, because we won't be able to -- I mean, we're not going to do this a fourth time, though.
Unless you'd like to table it until such time as they give the planning department the word that they've worked out the issues with the neighbors and with the planning staff, you're welcome to do that as well.
Okay. And is the applicant here? Please state your name and address.
Doug Brooks from Slater Hanafin Group, 5470 South Arable Drive, number 216, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89118. And I think we have everything now figured out. It just was one of those things where if we had a couple more days, we could have made it here, but I think everything's good. We should be good to go for the next Planning Commission meeting, so.
Commissioner? Okay, so, Commissioner Goines, I guess, based on what we've heard from the city attorney, if you want to state something about finding for cause and then make your motion again.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to move to follow the recommendation to hold this item until the April 14, 2015 Planning Commission meeting, so that the applicant and the residents can get together and work out some issues that they had on there. And I think that's sufficient enough reason for this motion.
Yes, sir, Commissioner.
With that, move for approval of the abeyance until April 14.
Okay, the motion is made to obey.
And that's on 15 through 18, Mr. Chairman?
15 through 18 and 19 through 22. Correct.
We can take them all in one motion?
Are they the same?
No.
Okay, let's do 15 through 18 and then 19 through 22.
Okay, very good.
So, my first motion was for Items 15 through 18?
Motion is made to obey Items 15 through 18 until the April 14, 2015 Planning Commission meeting. Please post. That motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, also, I'd like to request Items 19 through 22 be held in abeyance, so that the applicant and the residents can get together and work out some issues which were stated by the applicant.
Thank you, Commissioner Goines. Please post. That motion carries. Those items are also obeyed until next month's meeting. Are there any items that Commissioner's staff or applicants or members of the public wish to pull forward for action? Seeing none, I guess we've had the motion already on the housekeeping items, so we do want to take a minute for a special presentation now. It's my pleasure as this year's chair to acknowledge Commissioner Gus Flengus, who served as the Chairman of the Planning Commission from 2013 through the end of 2014. And staff and the Planning Commissioners have prepared a plaque that the Director and I would like to present to Commissioner Flengus as a token of our appreciation for his service over the past couple of years. And if you'd like to join us with a round of applause for Commissioner Flengus. [applause] It's half of your gavel. So, I think since we began the meeting, we've had a troop of scouts come in. Would you gentlemen like to stand up and be recognized? We're going to try and do our best to keep you entertained, but we're making no promises. And, yes, before we do that, Commissioner Schlotman, you have some special visitors here. Why don't we acknowledge them?
Sure. I'd like Betty and Mitch and Shane and Haley just to come up just for a quick second and --
Would that be appropriate at the end of the meeting?
Bring them on up.
Come on up to -- come up to the podium and just want to introduce you. So, they just flew in from Dallas this past weekend, and they're hanging out with us and wanted to come to the Planning Commission hearing. They watch us on the Internet now and then, and anyways, y'all want to say your names? I told the girls that they'll be on live TV, and when they get back to Texas, they could show all their friends on the Internet. What's your name?
Haley Schlotman.
Haley.
I'm 10.
And you're 10. What about your sister?
Shane Schlotman.
Shane, how old are you?
Eight.
Are you having fun in Vegas?
Yes.
All right. And then my mom and dad, if y'all want to say your name, y'all don't have to say your ages.
Yes. I'll say my name is Betty, and I'm not going to say my age, but I'm proud of Trinity, our son, our third son.
And my name is Mitch.
All right. Well, thanks for coming out tonight and hanging with us.
Welcome.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Betty and Mitch, you should be really proud of the work Trinity has done since he's come to Las Vegas. I think he's one of our shining stars, and whatever he does, he gives back to our community a hundredfold, so you did a great job. Congratulations.
Okay, moving on to the one motion, one vote portion of the agenda. The following are items that may be considered in one motion, one vote. They are considered routine, non-public, and public hearing items. All public hearings and non-public hearings will be opened at one time. Any person representing an application or a member of the public or a member of the Planning Commission not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item moved from this part of the agenda. Beginning with Item 7, TMP 57678. The applicant owner is Danielle Realty LLC for possible action on a request for a tentative map for a one-lot commercial subdivision.
Since these aren't public hearing items, you don't need to read them in.
Oh, really?
No. You're okay.
Even on the one motion, one vote?
Yeah. Those are non-public hearing items, so they don't have to be read in.
There are a few that are public hearing.
Okay, which ones are? All of them?
Eight through 10, I believe.
Okay, then I'm going to read the rest in, except for Item 11, which has been stricken. Item number 8, SUP 57633. The applicant is Western State's Lodging LLC. The owner is El Capitan Interchange for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a convalescent care facility slash nursing home on the northwest corner of Riley Street and Durango Drive in Ward 6. Staff recommends approval. Related item number 9, SDR 57635, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a 136-bed convalescent care facility nursing home, with waivers to allow a five-foot-wide landscape buffer along a 30-foot-long section of the south perimeter landscape buffer, where 15 feet is the minimum required, and to allow a six-foot-wide perimeter landscape buffer along the west property line, where a minimum of eight feet is required in Ward 6. Staff recommends approval. Finally, item number 10, SUP 57631. The applicant is Hoso Sushi Seafood, and the owner is Trails Village Center Company. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed beer-wine cooler on-sale establishment within an existing 4,475-square-foot restaurant with a 1,425-square-foot outdoor seating area at 1916 Village Center Circle, Suite 7, in Ward 2. Staff recommends approval. Now, were there any members of the public that wishes any of those items to be pulled forward? Seeing none, will any of the commissioners wish to have any of those items pulled forward? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, on Items 7, 8, 9, and 10 of the one motion, one vote, I'd move to approve, on all staff's -- subject to all staff's conditions.
Motion is to approve Items 7 through 10 on the one motion, one vote portion of the agenda. Please vote and post, and those items are approved.
Mr. Chairman, Item 7 will be his final action unless appealed to the City Clerk's Office within seven days. Items 8, 9, and 10 are final action unless appealed to the City Clerk's Office within 10 days.
Okay, thank you. We're now on to the public hearing item portion of the agenda. We will begin with Item 12, DIR 57834. The applicant owner is the City of Las Vegas for discussion and possible action on a presentation of the City of Las Vegas Alley Beautification Project. We please have a staff report.
Good evening. My name is Michael Howe. I'm a senior planner with the City of Las Vegas Department of Planning. I'd like to take a moment of your time, give a quick, brief presentation on an innovative effort that the Departments of Planning, Public Works, and the Office of Cultural Affairs have undertaken to basically retrofit some of our urban ISOs into civic art. I'm talking about activating our downtown alleys. So, what does an activated alley accomplish? Creative placemaking allows for increased commercial activities, such as outdoor dining spaces. If you can imagine, the fun stuff that occurs on Fremont East could occur on the backside of the alleys with careful improvements. Venue space for special events and concerts, increased pedestrian connectivity, space for displaying public art, crime deterrents, and increase in interactive open spaces. Basically, this program that we're looking at is to meet the goals listed in the Downtown Centennial Plan for increasing our urban form, pedestrian environment, and improving the image and character of downtown. So, what exactly are the components, or what are we talking about when we're talking about activated alleys? Well, we've pored over quite a few programs and endeavors that other cities across the U.S. have done, looking at Austin, Seattle, Boston, to kind of look at what are the common areas of success? What are the components that are the minimal effort required to make a very successful pedestrian space or an activated alley? We found that they require gateways, landmarks, landscaping, pavement and hardscaping, lighting, seating, art, business signage, and shade. And I'm going to demonstrate some of these components to see visually what we're talking about. Starting from the upper left-hand corner, working clockwise, we're looking at the ICA Alley, which is East Cohwenga, California, in L.A., Post Alley in Seattle, Acorn Alley in Kent, Ohio, Printers Alley in Tennessee, Nashville, Tennessee, Acorn Alley again, and Post Alley in Seattle. You can see the marking, the delineating factor of having a gateway calls the attention for the pedestrian to see that there's a space inviting them in. Landscaping, an essential component. Basically, biophilia, you know, people like to be close to plants, and as we start working or reworking these alleys, plants tend to smell nicer than some of these current alleys smell now. So, we have a way of inviting more floral, inviting improvements to the odors. Pavement and hardscaping, for me, a very important detail as we start looking at doing some of these improvements. Pave stones or cobblestones are a very important aspect of these alley improvements for the slight detail of, as a pedestrian, when you are on a cobblestone or paved stone surface, you feel natural as a walker, but as a driver, it's a little bit different. So, it sets the priority that these are pedestrian spaces, more so than vehicular spaces, which still can function as a utility space for trash. and collection and other services. Lighting, very essential component to offset the crime prevention, to make the space inviting. And it's also an opportunity for some public art. Really like to point out particularly the top center space. This is out of Sydney, Australia, and you see a lot of these, if you can see real closely, they're bird cages that have been illuminated. These bird cages are basically representing the 50 song birds that have been in Australia that have been lost over time. And they actually have speakers that during the night play back nocturnal birds and during the day play diurnal per daytime birds to kind of give also an audible improvement to the space. Some of the other improvements you can see is the festoon lighting, really where it calls into the space that it's a little more fun, inviting, and safe. Seating, an obvious requirement where people are seated, that attracts more people. It's kind of a cumulative effect. Also, a very important component that if we have these outdoor dining spaces, that it contributes to the business owner's ability to expand their business. Art, the real essential component of this, that these alleys function basically as public art venues. And it also allows us to get creative with how we put together these projects, where you have typical pedestrian lighting or monumental features you can do with artist's funding and grants that serve multiple purposes. Particular note is another, this top center photo, we have a graffiti wall that by using a shading device, also during the daytime, provides colored lighting. A lot of ways to kind of enjoy and rethink some of these alleys. Another popular component, I saw in Luxembourg last summer, this is, the colored umbrellas provides the shading, again, an interactive component, something to see and improvement. Business signage, there's some parts that we'll have to look at within our code to accommodate how these alleys function as a viable business frontage. There's some minor tweaking, but there's some possibilities that we can use. And again, shade, it's very hot in the Mojave Desert. Shade also is another public art opportunity, ways of, different ways of looking at it and using it. And so our next steps now, for us to take on this alley activation process, to really get these to work, to do the top shelf design that we're looking for, would best function under a public-private partnership, or possibly under a business improvement district, or something where the business owners that operate within these alleys contribute towards the maintenance and upkeep so that they can police these spaces, so that basically it stays in a nice appearance for a longer duration for the public. What we're at, at this point, we have created a short list of some alleys that meet some of the particulars that we're looking for. Basically, a lot of these projects remain as alleys. They remain a 20-foot public wide right-of-way for utility access. So some of the alleys have the opportunities where there's little carve-outs, old parking lots that would really function as courtyards and plazas. So we've made a short list that at some point, as we're contacting the property owners, to see what the interest is, so that we can deliver a pilot, basically, so that people have an understanding of how these will work. And then, an end product that we're looking at having by June is an alleyway design guideline book. The challenge here is to acknowledge that each alley space is a unique site, so we don't want to be too top-down and strong with the recommendations, just that we make sure that we have the required elements are included. And that's the conclusion of this presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Howe. This is a public hearing item. Do any members of the public wish to make any comment about this item? Seeing none, how about our fellow commissioners?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, question for planning staff. I've heard about the Las Vegas Alley Beautification for a number of years now, and in a couple of our projects, we actually put things into the alley, knowing that this was going to be coming. But when you talk about the public-private partnership, are there going to be any city funds to help pay for any of these improvements, or are you going to just create a Cid that's going to basically go back onto the business owners? And the second part in that question is, how much flexibility are they going to have to come up with their own designs with the guidelines you're putting up versus having to stick to pretty strict requirements?
First answer, it's still at a very conceptual stage. And so the idea is that the city provides a basic foundation. So the things that we do best at, you know, we put in the pavers, clear the alley, and then, in some cases, I don't want to get too far ahead, we remove a lot of the dumpsters with a partnership to do compactors so that we get a lot of the ugliness out of the alley and we address it as a service that all the property owners can use. So we do the improvements to basically take care of the drainage, the surfacing, and then we coordinate with the Office of Cultural Affairs and other opportunities for grants to install some of the public art. So what we're trying to avoid is some out-of-the-box, real quick, generic responses to the improvements that can be done. So we are still in the details of, you know, what does that require of the property owners? In what agreement, you know, what, is it a special improvement district? Is it, you know, how do we acknowledge that it stays public space in some cases as well? So there are some of those details. And in regards to the design guidelines, we're being very cautious to say that it's a heavy-handed approach. It says, you know, if you want to be in an activated alley, you have to check out all of these things. It's basically trying to be more performance-related so that, because if they're, all the spaces look the same, they're not very unique, it's not very placemaking, and it's not very attractive.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I may ask just one more question, or just make a comment, that I know of a couple of alleys which would be, where this would work perfect, you know, in between like Carson and behind like the Griffin, and then also on the other side of Fremont East District, behind the park, and going all the way down to the beat. And I think there is a huge opportunity to create pedestrian pathways through that little area. The very last question, and I'll turn it over to everybody else, is how long do you think it'll be before y'all come back with a formal plan of saying, hey, we're now going to, this is a plan that we have and would like for y'all to adopt this, and then...
It's our intent to have it by June, so quickly.
No further questions.
Mr. Chairman, first staff, as you go through this process, is there specific areas or is this strictly a core of downtown, or some alleys are dedicated by individual property owners, and there's some reversionary rights if they're no longer becoming an alleyway? And that may be a legal issue that you want to explore as you go through this process. The other part is dumpsters. I've heard this concept of putting compactors in alleys, and I've tried to get developers, property owners to do it. And it's like $30,000 for a compactor or $300 for a dumpster, and the choice becomes pretty quick. So, I mean, those kind of issues. And then the other part, and I'm not, I actually like this. I think it works in some great, some areas. I don't think it works everywhere, but these are still alleys. People's, businesses have a requirement to be able to take their sewage in and out of their back door. We don't want, we restrict as much as possible deliveries and waste going out the front doors, so we can't paint ourselves into something where we suddenly have an unintended consequence of how good this could be. And, because some of the examples you brought up are great alleys, but those were, they evolved and they were organic. I mean, up in Vancouver, there's some phenomenal ones, dining pavilions in them. It's just, the operation of them becomes a very different item.
Agreed. It's site selection and operation, because we're avoiding picking sites where it'll basically be a waste of time, money, and effort. And they have to, and that's where some of the site selection, we really want to see service industry, food-related industry, enough activity that goes through the day. And again, there are some of the challenges. On a good note, one of the alleys that we've looked at, we've been talking with some of the property owners, as a compactor, if you have enough participants, it actually is provided a substantial savings for them to basically justify the cost within a few months. It's greatly reduced their trash fees in that unique circumstance.
But in many cases, it becomes who fronts the dollars for those, the upfront dollars sometimes are greater than the average business can step up to, or even the average property owner would step up to. So there's got to be a vehicle for that. And then you got to work out placement, because who has to carry their trash the farthest? And they're going to leak bags up and down the surface. And I think this is workable, but you got to dig in, you don't want to be into the minute questions, but to get this to where people will buy into it, you're going to be the ones having to ask the questions, because the average property owner, average retailer won't until it's a problem. So, thanks.
Any other comments from commissioners? Okay, staff has no recommendation on this and no actions required. So we'll move on to item 13. This is DIR 57855. Again, the applicant owner is the City of Las Vegas for discussion and possible action on a presentation on the status of the downtown master plan.
Good evening, Commissioners. Robert Summerfield, the Department of Planning, senior planner there. You will recall, hopefully, last year, about this time, maybe a little later, we talked about the efforts underway for the downtown. And at the end of my presentation, discussing where we were at with the development of a Form-based Code, I talked about the fact that we were going to be engaging a consultant team to work with the city to help develop a vision for downtown. And so that's what I'm here to talk about today. This will be the first of what I anticipate will be several presentations over the course of the next 12 months that will be being made to the planning commission to just keep everyone up to speed on the development of that plan. It's anticipated that the plan will come forward to planning commission for a recommendation in early 2016. To start off this presentation, though, I wanted to just kind of give everyone a framework for where the downtown master plan effort fits in with some of the bigger elements that the city is working on. The city has come up with this concept called City by Design. Under that City by Design umbrella, there is currently five kind of big planning efforts. The first one is the Citywide Strategic Plan. These are the city councils' initiatives that they came up with last year during their retreats. They include looking at economic opportunities. This includes looking at potentials for diversifying our economy within the City of Las Vegas and enhancing our existing economic sectors such as our hospitality and service industries. Additionally, there's an element that's going to look at public safety with a particular focus on homelessness, and that effort is well underway. Additionally, there is an education component, looking at what we can do as a city to supplement the efforts of Clark County School District to increase academic achievement within the City of Las Vegas. And then finally, there is an effort underway to create a 20-year horizon transportation plan that is the Citywide Mobility Study. And the downtown master plan effort is very connected with that plan. Transportation in and around downtown and from downtown to other areas is a major component of our planning efforts, and so we are working very closely with the group in Public Works that is spearheading the Citywide Mobility Study. Additionally, there's the SC2 competition. That's a competition where the federal government granted money to just a couple locations to have a design essentially competition, where the participants come forward, they have the potential to earn significant cash prizes for supplying plans to the city that have an economic impact. And so that's underway with the anticipation that it will conclude in June of this year. Recently, there was a Cashman RFP process that went forward, attempting to find out about redevelopment opportunities and proposals for the Cashman site, with the anticipation as part of those proposals of potentially moving the baseball team. That process unfortunately did not yield many results. It is going to continue to be an effort of the city to look at the Cashman site and look at those redevelopment opportunities, but the RFP process unfortunately did not yield very many components. Additionally, we have the Medical District Facilities Plan. As many of you know, the city is actively involved in the process of citing a University of Nevada Las Vegas Medical School. We would like to see that, obviously, in the medical district. And so the city has been actively engaged on a very short time span to come up with a medical district facilities plan to demonstrate for our legislative folks the potential for a medical school within our Las Vegas medical district. And then finally, the downtown master plan, and that's what I'm here to speak to you about this evening, just to give you an update on where we're at, where we're going with that effort. The city has engaged RTKL. They are an international planning and architectural design firm. They are a lead consultant, but it is a team of consultants that includes folks who are dedicated to sustainability efforts, to transportation and infrastructure improvements, to coding, to help us with the regulatory piece once we get to that point in the process, and that are very good at the outreach and the public participation portion. We have locally for our outreach efforts, we have Vice Foley Warren, who is very, has been very instrumental in helping the city as well as other clients with engaging the public here in the Las Vegas Valley. So I'm going to give an introduction to the project. We're going to discuss some of the issues that have come up so far in the process. We're going to, I'm going to talk about what we've heard. We have had one major significant outreach event that occurred over two different sessions. We also held a number of stakeholder interviews. So we're going to talk about what we've heard from folks, and then I'm going to talk about the next steps in that process. Here's our timeline. As you can see, we are really at the beginning of this process still. We have completed, like I said, our first initial outreach event, and we're moving into the visioning phase of this planning effort. So as we move forward, we're going to be asking the community, the civic leaders, you folks, what are your visions for downtown Las Vegas? What would you like to see, not necessarily tomorrow, but thinking with a 20-year horizon? Because this plan is meant to be visionary. It is meant to be looking at a long-term plan for downtown. So we've got about 120 days so far in this. The consultant team has biked downtown, they've walked downtown, they've driven downtown, they've used the bus, they've had, like I said, they've had a number of stakeholder meetings, they met with people on the street and just asked impromptu questions. So they have been immersing themselves in what is downtown Las Vegas, as a large contingent of the team is from outside of the valley. Some of the challenges and issues that they have identified as part of their, the conversations that we've been having. As we all know, we have a homelessness problem in downtown Las Vegas. So one of the things that we need to work closely with is that the team that is working on the strategic plan, and particularly that public safety sector part that's dealing with homelessness, and how do we organize our homeless programs to better serve this community, and rethink maybe some of the ways we've been addressing that portion, that segment of our community with services in the past. Additionally, there's a lack of housing options. I think this is one that we all kind of know about. You know, we have a lot of low-density housing surrounding the downtown area. We have some apartments, but not a lot. And we have the high-rises that were built prior to the recession. We do not have a lot of medium-level housing options, affordable housing options, for some of those younger folks that want to live in the urban area, those older folks who want to get out of their suburban home and live in a more urban environment. So looking at some of the housing options that we can maybe look at moving forward is one of the issues. Additionally, we have a lack of open space in our downtown. Overall, the city does pretty well at meeting our goals for open space. However, downtown is an underserved area for open space. And this doesn't necessarily always mean parks. This can be plazas where you can have activities, where people can come out of their office building on a nice day, understanding, of course, that we have a large period during our summer where sometimes that may not be the most attractive thing. But we are lacking in open space opportunities downtown. As you can see on this slide, you know, the standard is 20... As you can see on this slide, you know, the standard is 25 acres per 10,000 residents. We exceed that citywide, but we're at just two acres of open space per 10,000 residents in the downtown area. Compared to other desert cities, that is still very, very small. So we need to begin looking at opportunities for that, where we can maybe put some additional open space. And thinking outside the box, that doesn't necessarily, again, need to be a park. Maybe that is a linear park along one of our streets. We have a great deal of right-of-way available to us in downtown. We have very wide streets in a lot of areas. So maybe some of that right-of-way can be repurposed as a linear park and other streetscape improvements to provide that kind of opportunity for folks. As many of you know, if you've driven downtown, we have a lot of vacant land. About 11% of the land is vacant. That means it doesn't have a parking lot on it. It doesn't have a building on it. It means it is essentially just empty, vacant, dust, land. So that's, again, another big opportunity for us as we move forward. Then there are some environmental concerns. As I mentioned, we do get a lot of sunlight. So any activities that we undertake as a part of this master plan, we need to be conscious of how much sunlight that we do get. It's both an opportunity in that maybe there's some additional solar production, an additional offsets that we can do in our sustainability efforts by using solar power. But we also know that that's a hindrance to get people out and getting them moving and getting them walking along the sidewalks and visiting the shops, restaurants, all that kind of stuff. Additionally, we have a low amount of water. We have some great conservation efforts, though. So again, we just need to be mindful of that as we move forward. Some of the things that we've heard from the stakeholder interviews, we were looking for some big ideas. As we move into this visioning process, we want to think about some of the, kind of the big ideas that we can aspire to. So what are some things that we can do using some of our existing economic sectors to diversify? So maybe looking at an incubator for virtual gaming. We have Take-Two Interactive that does gaming, non-gambling gaming. But maybe we can look at some other options there and increase that. We also have quite a bit of entertainment, all the shows that are on the Strip, the Smith Center. So what are some opportunities for maybe a fashion incubator for something like in our Arts District? Nevada is one of the few states that has been approved for UAV testing. And so again, what are some opportunities there for us? Battery manufacturing. We all know what's going on in northern Nevada. What are some opportunities here in southern Nevada to piggyback on those efforts and do some training in battery manufacturing? And then finally, we all know that the newest trend in manufacturing is looking at a light manufacturing model that uses some 3D printing options. Additionally, capitalizing on some of the sectors that we do now. So, but maybe moving in more of an educational capacity, such as bringing something like the Thunderbird School of Global Management to Las Vegas. We have quite a bit of expertise in hospitality and gaming and those kinds of things. So maybe in addition to the efforts that are going on at ULV, we could expand into creating a two-year program or a one-year program to help increase that educational attainment. Look at, and again, this is an idea. Look at maybe expanding the scope of the Arts District and not just be the Arts District, but the Arts and Design District, just as a concept. Bringing some additional retail options for downtown. Again, you can do some of these other retail options like a Target or the big-box stores, but you can do them in an urban environment and provide another shopping opportunity. Again, Cashman Center as a potential economic development hub. And then, as we talked about previously, trying to find an opportunity for a green space. And not just a green space that's just there, but something like a Symphony Park, but maybe programmed elsewhere, where you have the opportunity for it to be a gathering space, for it just to be an open space where you can do a bunch of different things. So on January 29th, we held two outreach sessions. During that time period, we had about 175 participants at the Fifth Street School. We also held a number of stakeholder interviews, as I mentioned, where we heard a bunch of this information. Some of the results. So generally speaking, there's a lot of interest in downtown, and it's mostly positive, although as clearly indicated, you know, on this slide, there are some folks who do have some negative perceptions of downtown that we have to address in our planning efforts. But when you think about what Las Vegas could be, say, in 2035, there's a lot of energy here in moving us beyond just gaming, although acknowledging how important that is to our economy. There is a bunch of interest in looking forward. So we want to capitalize on that momentum as well. And then some of the most important improvements. So one of the things, the big thing that we heard was open space. Promoting our local businesses. We have had a lot of interest in businesses that have opened, but now how do we retain those businesses and keep those businesses flourishing? So what can we do to promote those local businesses? Again, increasing housing choice. A big one is improving transit options and mobility, both in downtown and in and out of downtown. And then finally, addressing some of our social service issues. And then this is just more of some of those big ideas for downtown that we heard, again, kind of reiterating some of those themes that we've already talked about. When we get to the transportation discussion, one of the things that we really want to look at... Okay, sorry. One of the things that we really want to look at is how do we encourage and increase our pedestrian-friendly streets? Our Public Works Department has been actively engaged in improving our streetscapes in a number of areas, and we want to continue that momentum. There is a push and an interest in the community in looking at the availability for light rail. And then bike share and bike trails increasing and improving on the efforts that we've already gone through there. Housing types. Again, we want to begin looking at some of these other housing types. There was significant interest during the outreach event in that. And again, different ways of producing that open space. Again, that it doesn't necessarily need to be that large park that it can be done in multiple ways. And what does this mean? It means people are passionate about downtown, and we want to, again, continue to capitalize on that. They want to see the city take a more active role in coordinating efforts to address the homeless population and the homeless situation. And they want us to continue to improve at that street level, increase that pedestrian experience, that bicycle experience, and what have you. And again, we want to capitalize on some of our cultural amenities as well. We have quite a bit of cultural amenities in the downtown area. How do we continue to coordinate those and keep those connected to the rest? And then basically, we're just looking, next step is the vision for downtown. So we will be encouraging everyone to participate. We will be having another outreach event, I believe, towards the end of April. And with more information will be made available as soon as we finalize those plans. But the vision for downtown is our next step, and we want to make sure everybody gives us as much input on that as possible. And that's it.
Thank you very much.
Did I understand that you were going to do an outreach with the commission? Or is that what you were looking for, other input?
I'm sorry, say that again.
I mean, in advance of your vision plan, were you looking to get, take input from the Planning Commission early on or after the vision?
Well, throughout the process, we will be getting input or requesting input from the Planning Commission. So as we move forward, we will be doing additional updates and requests. I don't want to speak out of hand, but I think one of the efforts that we are hoping to do later this year is a workshop with both Planning Commission and City Council to talk about some of these things, unless that maybe has changed. But we will be continuing to engage the Planning Commissioners in this process as we move forward.
Okay. First, are there any members of the public that wish to make any comments about this presentation? See none? Let's talk about this as Commissioners. Commissioner Quinn and then Vice Chair.
I just have a very quick comment. And I realize that the Springs Preserve is not initially a part of the downtown redevelopment. It is three miles about west from you. But it would be a great partnership, in my opinion, with the Las Vegas Water District for that green space that you're looking for, for some big outdoor venues where you can bring people in. That really needs some revitalization with your partnership with the Las Vegas Water District. Maybe your green space is just a tad out of the middle of the city, and it's just up the block from you. So if you take a look at that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Commissioner Swatman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Just a comment for staff. Just keep in mind that we really don't have many parks downtown. And with all the residential that's going to be constructed around the central core, it'd be wise to start looking at potential properties that we can hold on to for future parks, even if we don't have money to build those parks. And in a discussion with our city manager, Betsy Fretwell, probably six months ago, she come up with the idea of maybe we'll take streets that don't affect property owners, where there's no direct access or any businesses built on those particular parcels that have access from the other side of their parcel, where we might be able to turn some of these streets into parks. So I'd like for y'all to keep that in mind and for y'all to look at that with Public Works. And not saying that there is, but I'd like to research that a little further. And one last question for Public Works, Lucian. Could you comment on where you stand on the Carson Avenue improvements, going from Las Vegas Boulevard, I think, all the way down to Maryland Parkway? Because that was part of this presentation, talking about the streetscape. Have the plans been formalized? And will that project start anytime soon?
Mr. Chairman, I don't know right now. But if you give me a minute, I might go look on our Intranet and look for the project to see what phase it's at. Usually, we have four different phases. You know, planning phase, design phase, a construction phase, and a bid phase. So I don't have the information with me right now, but maybe later on in the meeting, I can provide you with that information.
That'd be great. And even if it's not during this meeting, if you could email me just so I'm kept up to date on that. Thank you.
Commissioner Trusdale.
Parti, a good share of your presentation on the downtown master plan. A lot of comments about the homeless issue and how we're going to try to find a positive way to deal with that. Since the social services are located that are north of downtown, homeless, the homeless issue isn't an issue of downtown. It's valley, it's Clark County-wide. It's in, it's in, Green Valley has homeless issues. The Strip has homeless issues. They're everywhere. It seems to me that this Clark County as a whole should be looking at a holistic approach to deal with the homeless. Because if you just want to create parks downtown, we created a great one right across the street from the last, from the old City Hall, and it was destroyed in a few months. Then resotted, redeveloped, and destroyed again a couple of months later, and then fenced off. I believe we should have green space. I believe we should have wonderful space for people to spend time with their families, just relax during lunch, and really enjoy the quality of life that Las Vegas has to offer. But it's a balancing act with the court rulings and stuff. The City of Las Vegas has never done well in its legislative issues when it comes to homeless. So I'd love to see this master plan take on a holistic approach of how downtown we have a vision. But I would hate to see us getting lost in the homeless question and pass up doing some great visionary thinking for downtown. Because there are always going to be some of those problems. And we've got to, it's generational, it's social. There's so many different issues to it. But we need to have a vision of what a greater city is, and that's going to be green space. It's going to be parks, but that's parks that parents can take their kids to and hear something other than saying, hey, there's, why can't we camp at the park, Dad? They're camping. It's one of those things that we need to be real sensitive to.
And to be honest, that is one of the takeaways that we had from one of our outreach discussions, was the fact that we can't limit ourselves in this planning effort because we know that we have a homeless problem. What we need to do is think of creative solutions to address that situation where maybe the city isn't the owner of the park. Maybe through some private-public partnerships and agreements, the city contributes to the development of the park, but maybe the park is privately owned and has some other options. But that's one way of looking at it.
That's one way, but globally, we should just say, we want this great visionary city. We want this. We want, we want parks. We want a streetscape that's wonderful. And we can't do that. I mean, we can do that, but then we need to enforce things. I mean, go on Fourth Street. You know, we built a wonderful streetscape along Fourth and, you know, pedestal seating and everything. And it's all but a constructed encampment there, just south of Charleston now. And so those things are there. But I would say, let's don't get caught up in the home, let's get caught up in a vision of what our city should be. And then, as residents here, do what we have to do to take back our city to make it what we want to live in. Housing makes easy options, and parks, and landscaping, and quality of life. So.
Thank you. Maybe we could introduce to the homeless something that our Boy Scouts in the back understand, and that's the concept of leave-no-trace camping. They always leave a campsite better than they found it. Find a way to improve at the same time they're there. How about that? All right. I want to thank both of you for your presentations tonight. This is something that's going to become a standard part of our agenda. And I know that although our time's precious, it's nice to see what's going on and be reminded that as a Planning Commission, we have a charge, particularly with respect to the master plan. So this has been helpful, and thank you. I also failed to note earlier, Commissioner Quinn handed me a note that she was absent for the January 2015 Planning Commission meeting. And so we will ask the clerk to make, to remove her vote approving the minutes of that meeting and make it an abstention. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to related items 25 and 26, ZON 57688. The applicant is Century Communities. The owner is Apollo Property Holdings LLC. For possible action on a request for a rezoning from U, undeveloped zone, L, low-density residential, to R1, single-family residential at the northeast corner of Jones Boulevard and Horse Drive in Ward 6. Staff recommends approval. Related item 26, TMP 57689. For possible action on a request for a tentative map for a 76-lot, single-family residential subdivision on 19.71 acres at the northeast corner of Jones Boulevard and Horse Drive, also in Ward 6. Staff recommends approval. Can we please have staff's report?
Mr. Chairman, this site is located within the Centennial Hill Sector Plan and is designated L, low-density residential. The development conforms with the general plan, and so does the zoning and the development standards found in Title 19. As such, staff recommends approval of both applications. Please note, we have received additional letters of protest and support since publication.
Good, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Gronauer. Your name and address, please.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good evening. My name is Bob Gronauer, 8345 West Sunset Road. In this matter, I'm representing Century Communities, a home builder, on this piece of property. If I can get your attention to the overhead, I can show you the exact location. Thank you. As you can see here, the property is located on the northeast corner of Jones, which runs north and south in this area, Horse, which runs east and west in this area. We have approximately 20 acres of property that is currently vacant in this area. This is more or less an infill piece of property out here in the northwest area. The land plan, as your staff has mentioned, is low-density residential, which allows up to five dwelling, 5.49 dwelling units per acre. We're coming in with an R1 zone change that allows up to also up to 5.49 dwelling units to the acre. But it's important to note that we are not asking to max out the R1 zoning in the low-density land plan area. As a matter of fact, we're coming in with 3.73 units to the acre on the 20 acres. It's a gated community. Many of the lots in here are about 8,000 square feet. With respect to the homes that we're going to be proposing, the homes itself will go anywhere from over 2,100 square feet all the way up to about 4,100 square feet. Price points will vary anywhere from about $350,000 all the way to just under $500,000 for a base price in this area. We respect and thank staff's recommendation for approval for the zone change. We respect and thank staff's recommendation for approval for the zone change itself, which is in conformance to your land plan, and with respect to the tentative map that we've also submitted to for their approval. That being said, I can answer any other questions that you may have.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'll open this for public comment. Do any members of the public wish to be heard for against this item or these items? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment and open this for discussion among the planning commissioners.
Mr. Chairman. In looking at this project, I actually like the interior streets, the size. The lots are compatible with the area around it, and I think it, the developer's done a lot to provide a mix of lot sizes and a quality of houses that fit with everyone around it. And I think it's an appropriate project, and we'll support it.
Thank you very much. I can state that I, too, am in support of your project. I like the plan, and I agree with staff's recommendation for approval. Any other commissioners wish to be heard?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I just appreciate you bringing a project before us without 15 waivers. Not saying that you do, but we see it all the time. So thank you for trying to meet the code as best as you can. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to take that home. Thank you.
Commissioner Goins?
No, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to full disclosure. This property is in the notice area of where I live, but I feel that I can support it wholeheartedly. I look forward to about 80 new neighbors.
Mr. Commissioner. Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Yes.
Commissioner Goins, as long as it doesn't affect you any greater or lesser than anyone else in that neighborhood, you're okay to vote?
That would be correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to, on item 25, to follow staff's recommendations for approval, subject to all conditions.
Motion is to approve item 25. Please vote. Please post. Motion carries. Item 26.
With regards to item 26, move to follow all of staff's recommendations and approvals.
Motion is to approve item 26. Please vote. Please post. Motion also carries. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, items 25 and 26 will be heard at the City Council meeting of April 15, 2015.
Thanks. Thank you very much. Item 27, VAR 57612. The applicant owner is Mark J. and Suzanne V. Siegel. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow a four-foot rear yard setback where 10 feet is required for a proposed 764-square-foot accessory structure, Class II garage at 7008 Viabella Luna Avenue in Ward 6. Staff recommends denial. Can we please have staff's report?
Mr. Chairman, an alternate design for this project could alleviate the need for the variance. As such, staff finds that this is a self-imposed hardship and recommends denial of the project. Please note, we've received additional letters of protest and support since publication.
Thank you very much. Can we please hear from the applicant, your name and address first?
Mark Siegel and Suzanne Siegel, 7008 Viabella Luna Avenue. We are requesting a variance for a rear setback of four feet where a 10-foot setback is required for an accessory garage that, for the following justifications. Exceptional condition, unique to the subject property. We live on a cul-de-sac where the majority of the properties are between a half and three-quarter acre. Our particular lot has a shallow rear yard, and we would like to place the accessory structure closer to the rear property line. By doing so, this will allow us to park our cars and our trailer in the yard behind the gate, and also allow access to the garage through the gate and into the garage without having to move the trucks and trailers while accessing the garage. Also, the second justification is, we feel this variance will allow for our enjoyment of a substantial property right, which is possessed by other properties in the same development. Our proposed structure is compatible with the majority of the other accessory structures in our development, which, there are many casitas and garages in the rear yards, which were constructed when the development was developed between 2004 and 2005 under the previous zoning requirements, which allowed for a minimum three-foot variance. A three-foot setback. Correct. Also, we have met with our adjacent neighbors to, on both sides of our property and to the rear of our property, and all of our neighbors which border our property have basically approved the structure. The one neighbor to our left previously denied the request, and then later sent a revised approval. That would be the Coens. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. The neighbor directly behind us met with us for a long period of time and had concerns, and we addressed their concerns, which were basically to soften the look of the structure by changing the roof line to a hip roof and softening that appearance from their vantage point, and also adding additional landscaping in our rear yard that would soften the look of the property. We feel that, you know, placing the garage 10 feet forward of the rear property line would negatively impact our ability to access the garage and to use the rear yard for parking our vehicles behind the gate.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Siegel, anything to add?
No, I disagree with everything.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'll open the public comment to any members of the public wish to be heard on this item. Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. And let me begin. Do you have approval from the HOA on this?
We do. We actually submitted for that approval prior to submitting our plans. We requested their input as to the size of the structure, the setback, and other criteria, which all of the criteria was met.
Very good. So you disclose the architectural plans to the HOA. Those were approved?
That's correct.
All right. And you've also met with, you're a budding neighbors, and they're in favor of this. You said one was initially opposed, but now all of your surrounding neighbors are in support of this.
That's correct.
All right. Thank you. And based on that, I'm going to support your application tonight. I do want to hear from the other planning commissioners that may wish to speak.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, through you, just one question. I don't know if it really carries any weight, but just would like to ask applicants, reading this one protest cards, it says it, something about discussions requested by the neighborhood and HOA management, or CCNRs currently prohibits their requests. Is that true? And do you actually have proof that your HOA is allowing you to do this?
Yes. One of the requirements of submitting the architectural request is a neighborhood awareness form, which is, needs to be signed by all adjacent neighbors. The particular neighbor that originally declined the request was this particular neighbor. The reason we originally didn't submit for their approval was...
I'm sorry. If we can ask the, show the overhead so we can see what he's pointing at?
So we can...
Okay, we can see now. Go ahead.
This is our property, and we obtained awareness or approval from this neighbor, this neighbor, and this neighbor.
And across the street.
And directly across the street from our driveway. We originally did not seek approval or notify this neighbor, and that was the neighbor that originally declined our request. And we later met with them and asked them what the issue was, and they basically said, you didn't make us aware of it prior to submitting for the architectural approval.
I understand. I think the question is, do you have something in writing from the HOA and the surrounding homeowners?
Yes, I do.
Has that been previously submitted? And if not, maybe you could give it to the clerk, and we can make that part of the record.
Yes, the awareness form was previously submitted, and also the architectural approval.
All right. And what else do you have with you tonight?
Would I, should I just place it?
Sure.
Okay. This basically was provided to me by the neighbor who originally declined and informed me that they later revised their statement.
Do you mind just turning that so it's facing you and readable? There you go.
The neighbor is Mr. and Mrs. Cohen, who are also adjacent to our property, but basically border the front end of our property. And we originally didn't contact them because they don't have, their property doesn't have a vantage point to our rear yard. And the way we understood the neighbor awareness form was any adjacent neighbor who may be impacted by the structure. And we didn't feel that they were impacted.
But now they're in support of this.
They now support our plan, yes.
Thank you.
Chairman, and just to kind of follow with Commissioner Schlotman's question, even if you granted it, or the City Council granted it, and the HOA denied it, the HOA, you don't, the City Council and you don't overrule the HOA. So if they can't build it according to HOA documents, they couldn't build it, even if you approved it.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, one last question. Could you, you're on Viabella Luna Avenue.
Correct.
And can you go back to the overhead and tell me where Via, oh, I'm sorry, 7500 Via Sistina Street is?
Via Sistina is the street where these two particular homes are located.
Got you. Thank you. No further questions.
Okay. Why don't you go ahead and hand to the clerk anything that you've not previously submitted that you've stated are supporting your application this evening? Thank you. Any other commissioners wish to be heard? Commissioner Trusdale?
If there's no other comments, I would, I think the applicant has shown that he's reached out to his neighbors, his association, and provided evidence as such, and feel that in that regard, I could, I'll make a motion for approval, subject to all as-of-approved conditions of planning.
Thank you, Commissioner Trusdale. The motion is for approval of item 27. Please vote. Please post. That motion carries. Item 27 is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, item 27 is final action unless appealed to the city clerk's office within 10 days.
Thank you. Moving on to item 28, VAR 57693. The applicant owner is the city of Las Vegas. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow a 15-foot-tall freestanding sign where 12 feet is the maximum height allowed, 78 square feet of sign area where 48 square feet is the maximum sign area allowed, and to locate a freestanding sign 10 feet away from an existing monument sign where at least 100 feet is required at 7353 Eugene Avenue in Ward 4. Staff recommends denial.
Mr. Chairman, this morning, the planning department received a revised plan indicating a reduction in the overall area of the sign and the removal of the current sign. As such, those two variances that are part of this application are no longer needed. The applicant is still requesting a variance for the height of the sign to allow 15 feet where 12 feet is allowed. Staff finds the request for an increase in sign height is minor in nature and has no impact on the surrounding properties, as there are commercial properties where their signs could be up to 40 feet high. As such, staff now recommends approval of this project. Please note, we have received additional letters of protest and support since publication.
Thank you very much. Can we please hear from the applicant?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Michael Volevich. I'm with the Public Works Department, City of Las Vegas, 333 North Rancho Drive. The drawing that was referred to by staff is one that I have right now on the overhead. I'm not sure if it's in your packets or not, but we have made some modifications that, again, reduces the size of the sign. This particular sign is not an advertising sign, and on this particular corner, even at this size, it will be dwarfed by all the other signs that are on that very commercial corner. This is, even though we're addressed on Eugene, we're very, very far away from Eugene, and I have an idea that's where some of the protests may have come from, for people that thought that it was perhaps impacting their residential area a little bit more. I have to let others, I guess, respond to that. The, again, we are removing the existing park monument sign that's there in favor of putting the name of the park on that sign as well. It's not an advertising sign. This is strictly a sign for making things the city is doing, events known to the public. It's for information purposes. Even emergency-type announcements will be placed on the sign. We are restricted by our BLM. This is, the site was acquired from BLM as part of that acquisition. We are not allowed to make money via advertisements on this site, and so it will not be an advertising site.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'll, excuse me, I'll open this now for public comment. Do any members of the public wish to be heard either for or against this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment and open this for discussion with the planning commissioners. Commissioner Trusdale?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Back in another lifetime, I was somewhat opposed to the other sign that was there because I didn't think it did what it should for the park. And I think this one is much more appropriate, and the location is much better, and I will support it.
Mr. Chairman, I echo Commissioner Trusdale's remarks on this. I think it's a good location for this sign. There's a, this is a hub of activity up in the Summerlin area. There's so much going on with that Betty Wilson facility and different things, and so I think this is really a no-brainer to approve this.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Mr. Schlotman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, question for staff. Does there need to add a condition on here for the illumination of the sign? Or is that something that's just required by Title 19 or our code, where if they exceed a certain amount of nets, then they can get, the code compliance call?
I don't think there's, that condition needs to be added. This is, this will be required to conform with the new ordinance that was passed recently regarding digital displays, and it cannot exceed 300 nets. But I did forget to read a condition of approval in, and bear with me really quick because I misplaced that. Have you got it? Thank you, Mr. Lowenstein. All developments shall be in conformance with the site plan date stamped 1/22/15 and sign elevation date stamped 3/10/15. The overhaul, overall height of the freestanding sign shall not exceed 15 feet. Yeah, we submitted 14 feet, 10 inches to the clerk, but we should really say 15 feet because those two inches can make a difference when they're building the sign.
And sir, do you agree with the condition?
I do agree with the conditions.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no further discussion on this matter, I would go ahead and to move for approval on item number 28, VAR 57693.
Motion is to follow staff's recommendation for approval on item 28, subject to all the conditions. Please vote. Please post. That motion carries. Item 28 is approved.
Mr. Chairman, item 28 is final action unless appealed to the city clerk's office within 10 days.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 28, VAR 57866. The applicant owner is Richard Craig Estey. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow a proposed accessory structure, Class II detached portico chair, to be located in the front yard where such is not permitted at 9505 Kingsgate Court in Ward 2. Staff recommends denial. Can we please have staff's report?
Mr. Chairman, no evidence of unique or extraordinary circumstances has been presented, and the applicant has created a self-imposed hardship by proposing to construct a 700-
and the applicant has created self-imposed hardship by proposing to construct a 791-square-foot accessory structure to be located within the front yard where such not is permitted by code. In view of any absence of a hardship imposed by the site's physical characteristics, it's concluded that the applicant's hardship is preferential in nature, and it's thereby outside the realms of NRS Chapter 278 for granting the variance, and staff is recommending denial. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we please hear from the applicant, your name and address, please?
Frank Pancratz with EHB Companies, 9755 West Charleston Boulevard. And John Jones is with me here. He's the, his company, Altrix, is the residential home designer. We had originally built this home, and if I can maybe on the overhead show the location of the, of the subject home. Charleston, this is in Queensridge South, and this is Charleston Boulevard. And through the entrance into Queensridge South from Charleston, the second neighborhood to the right as one enters the community is Kingsgate Court neighborhood with 12 lots. Of those 12 lots, seven are constructed, and there's five lots, empty lots of the, five empty lots, we are affiliated with three of them. And we built three of the seven homes that are there, including the subject home. We initially built it for a buyer who has subsequently sold it, and we're doing a major renovation for Mr. and Mrs. Estes. Commensurate with the redesign of the landscaping of the home and the renovations, they saw the home, two doors to the east, which has a freestanding port of cachet, which is Mr. Loey's home, and that home and that freestanding port of cachet were approved as part of the building permit for that home. We have an overhead here that shows Mr. Loey's home on the left that has the freestanding port of cachet and the subject home located to the west, two doors down, and the approximate location of the freestanding port of cachet. Here is an overhead of the port of cachet. It's commensurate with the front yard architecture of this home. It adds significant curb appeal to this home, as well as it's, helps break up the front yard architecture of the home, and yet blends in well with what is being built there and being part of the renovation. So with that, unless there's any questions, we ask the planning commission for your approval.
Okay, thank you. I'll open this for public comment. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment, and this is now open for discussion amongst the planning commissioners. Commissioner Quinn?
Thank you. Through you, so this house, do you have neighbors on each side of you?
There are neighbors.
That are living in the house?
There are neighbors to, one neighbor to the, one neighbor to the west.
Yes.
And a neighbor to the, to the east, and then we have the lot across the street.
Okay. Have you spoken to those neighbors about this addition? Because I see that you're getting, we're getting feedback from West Charleston that people are for this project, but I'm not seeing anybody from Kings Court Street. Nobody sent anything in. So what is the, what's it feel like on the street? Are they okay with this?
John, can you address that, please?
Sure. During the submittal process of the, for the Kings Gate Court, we actually had to get approval from neighboring properties. We did get their approval from, I believe, four of the, which was, we took the neighbors and then obviously the one vacant property across the street. So we have communicated with the neighbors, and there's been no objections and nothing that's, no concerns that we've been aware of that we need to change any of it, so.
Okay, thank you. I was just curious why all your likes came from Charleston Avenue and not your street. Thank you.
Yeah. You know, this does fit with the adjacent, you know, with, I guess, you said Mr. Loey's house that has a similar port of cachet.
Yes, sir.
All of these properties are very large homes with very large setbacks and long driveways. You know, I don't see how this, where this is going to create undue burden visually or otherwise. It's set back generally in the area of the front two, the garages in front, and I think it's the kind of structure that's anticipated with the design of these properties, and I'll support this application. And I think most of those ones that went on West Charleston went to business addresses that they maintain, so.
Do you want to go ahead and make a motion?
Yeah, if there are no other questions, I'd make a motion to, for approval, subject to staff's as-of-approved conditions.
Motion is to approve item 29. Please vote. Please post. That motion carries. Item 29 is approved.
Mr. Chairman, that item is final action unless appealed to the city clerk's office within 10 days.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're now on to item 30, SUP 57595. The applicant is Nevada Fine Wine and Spirits. The owner is Tag Centennial LLC at Al. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 34,506-square-foot packaged liquor off-sale establishment at 5720 Centennial Boulevard in Ward 6, staff recommends approval. Can we please have the staff report?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed use meets all the minimum special use requirements, is not within 400 feet of any protected uses. As this requirement meets all minimum special use requirements and can be conducted in a compatible and harmonious manner within the existing shopping center, staff recommends approval of this application. Please note that both letters of protest and support have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we please hear from the applicant, starting with your name and address?
Absolutely. Good evening, chairperson and commissioners. My name is Jonathan Nguyen. I'm here on behalf of Total Wine, Nevada Fine Wine and Spirits, 400 South Rampart, Suite 400. We're here, of course, as staff said, they're recommending approval. We're here also to ask for your approval. There's one issue that has come up with condition eight on the SUP. That condition reads, "All beer and wine coolers shall remain in the original manufacturer's configuration intended for off-sale resale." And why that's an issue, we talked with staff about it, is the addition of growlers. Recently, the City of Las Vegas Code was amended to allow specifically for growler sales. If you're not familiar with what a growler is, it's all the new rage in beer sales and beer consumption. Essentially, a growler is a gallon jug, glass typically, that you can go in, fill by the keg, and then it is sealed, and then the customer can purchase that and take it for off-sale consumption. So we want to eliminate any ambiguity that there might be in this SUP proposed condition regarding the use of growlers. And so staff is advised that we make a formal request to remove that condition and that they would not oppose it. And so we're asking to, we're asking for your approval today and also to remove condition eight.
Okay, thank you. I'll open this for public comment. Does anyone wish to be heard for or against this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment and open this for discussion. Let me just begin by saying this is one of the right locations for, for this project, and I'm in support of it even with the removal of condition eight, so.
Great.
Thanks for your work on this. Any other commissioners wish to be heard? Someone like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll follow staff's recommendations for approval and striking the condition with regard to single, or just, so you can sell your growlers.
Great.
All right. Motion is to approve item 30 with the removal of condition number eight. Please vote. Please post. Motion is approved.
Mr. Chairman, that item is final action unless appealed to the city clerk's office within 10 days.
Thank you very much. Item 31, SUP 57600. The applicant owner is David M. and Carolyn J. Webb. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 1,277-square-foot accessory structure, Class 1 casita at 1991 Casa Vista Drive in Ward 1, staff recommends approval. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the proposed project meets all Title 19 requirements for an accessory structure, Class 1, and the applicant states in the justification letter that the structure will house extended family. The proposed structure can be constructed, operated in a manner that is harmonious and compatible with the surrounding land uses and is consistent with the intent of the housing element of the Las Vegas 2020 master plan. Please note, letters of support have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we please hear from the applicant, name and address, please?
My name is Dave Webb. I live at 1991 Casa Vista. I am the owner of this dwelling. The intended use of this casita is a mother-in-law's quarter after the passing of my father-in-law, so the overall intent is to consolidate family. That's essentially it in a nutshell. It has a two-car garage, and we intend to park cars in it as well.
Okay, thank you. I'll open this for public comment. Does anyone wish to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Any members of the commission wish to be heard? Commissioner Quinn?
Thank you. I can make this very quick. I visited your street today. I gave you a phone call. It's ideally the ideal location for a casita. You're on a 20,000-square-foot piece of property. You meet every variance. You meet every, everything. So you're going to see my support on this, and I wish you a lot of luck with it. So my motion is for approval of SUP 57600.
Thank you.
Motion is to approve item 31. Please vote.
Sorry I missed you today. It's a nice house.
I'm sorry, too.
Please post. Item 31 is approved. That motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, that item is final action unless appealed to the city clerk's office within 10 days.
All right. Item 32, SUP 57686. The applicant is Walgreens Company. The owner is Sahara Development LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed retail establishment with accessory packaged liquor off-sale use within a proposed 17,238-square-foot general retail store at 2427 South Las Vegas Boulevard, Suite 100 in Ward 3. Councilman Coffin. Staff recommends approval. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, before staff goes forward, I'm going to abstain on sign. As much as I own the property around it and would be greatly affected either way, so.
Of course you do.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Staff report?
Mr. Chairman, the general retail store is 17,238 square feet in size with 148 square feet of space used for the display of alcohol beverages. The proposed use adheres to all the minimum special use permit requirements as outlined in Title 1912, and as such, can be conducted in a compatible and harmonious manner with the future general retail use. Staff therefore recommends approval of this application. Please note that letters of support have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we please hear from the applicant?
Good evening once again, chairperson and commissioners. My name is Jonathan Nguyen, 400 South Rampart, Suite 400, here on behalf of Walgreens and its special use permit application for an accessory packaged liquor use at the, its new store on the corner of Sahara and Las Vegas Boulevard. Staff has recommended approval, and we ask you do the same, and I can answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. I'll open this for public comment. Does anyone wish to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment and hear a comment from the planning commissioners. Vice Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I don't have a huge issue with the accessory package use at this, opso at this proposed location, but with the way that some of the other Walgreens within the area have been run, you know, with people drinking within 1,500 feet of your store that can't see if they bought the liquor there or not, but they just need to keep up with the place a little bit better and show that they can keep up with it. And in an effort to do that, I'd like to see a one-year administrative review just to ensure that you can, your security can handle any kind of the issues that you are having down on Charleston and Las Vegas Boulevard, which I go by twice a day and see, so. That's all I have.
The applicant willing to agree to that?
Yes, our client is willing to agree to that, and, you know, our client does its best to keep up with all the requirements, and they have an excellent track record across the country with alcohol sales and preventing sales to minors and things of that nature. So they will absolutely, we will relay that to our client, and they will continue to.
And I do agree that Walgreens does a great job with, with that, but we have issues in my neighborhood, and I just would like to make sure we don't see these same issues, you know, in Sahara and Las Vegas Boulevard, because I get a lot of comments back from the neighborhood and, you know, just want to, want to make all the people from Beverly Green and, you know, and Ward 3 happy whenever we do this. And I'm sure you can keep it up, and one year you go before city staff, you don't have a lot of code compliance, and then it becomes permanent.
Yep, our client would agree to that.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none. Commissioner Schlotman, I'll entertain a motion.
Oh, one question through you, Chair. You're not going to serve liquor through the drive-thru, are you?
No.
Okay. Do we need to make that a condition?
Do you think we need that as a condition, staff, or is that something impermissible? That's not a drive-through. It's a drive-through for prescriptions, I'm assuming, and not for alcohol.
Right.
Yeah, it's a pharmacy, and that drive-through is for prescriptions. I would have to review Title 6 to see if it would be allowed or not. In regards to the zoning code, it's.
Commissioner, maybe you can just add it, and if not in between, is this final action, Tom, or?
You may want to add something on there just to, just to make it clear that that's impermissible through the drive-through. And I think that would be fine by the applicant, as he's not planning on doing it anyways. I know that when you go to Walgreens, you can get a variety of things through the pharmacy, not just your meds.
Right, no, there are no plans to sell alcohol through the drive-through.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion?
Yes. Chairman, on item number 32, SUP 57686, I'd move to approve following staff's recommendation for approval, subject to all of staff's recommendations, and add in a condition that no liquor sales will occur through the drive-through.
And the one-year administrative.
And the one-year administrative review.
Okay. Motion is made. Please vote. Please post. And that motion carries, noting the abstention of Commissioner Trusdale.
And Mr. Chairman, that item is final action unless appealed to the city clerk's office within 10 days.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item four, the last item on the public comment portion of the agenda, SDR 57890. The applicant owner is Liberty Baptist Church of Las Vegas. For possible action on a request for a major amendment to plot plan review, Z-0089-86, Sub 1, for a proposed 70-foot radio communication tower operated in conjunction with an existing church house of worship at 6501 West Lake Mead Boulevard in Ward 5. Staff recommends approval. Can we please have the staff report?
Mr. Chairman, the radio tower will allow the church to operate a radio station in conjunction with other religious services. No waivers or variances are required with this application, and the proposed tower can be constructed in a way that is harmonious and compatible with the existing and surrounding land uses. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of this request. Please note that letters of protest have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we please hear from the applicant?
My name is Dave Tyson, the pastor of Liberty Baptist Church here in Las Vegas, and we're just here to answer any questions that you may have. We brought with us several members of our church that are here in support.
Okay. I'll open this for public comment. Does anyone wish to be heard either for or against the item? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment and open this for discussion amongst the commissioners, beginning with Commissioner Quinn.
Just a quick question, Pastor. This is strictly for a radio show? It's not going to be for a cell tower?
No, this is for a radio, a radio station.
Okay, because, you know, you can make some money putting a cell tower on there, right? Just kidding. Just wanted to double-check with you. Thank you.
Commissioner Schlotman?
How much higher, through you, Chairman, question for the applicant, how much higher is this antenna than the steeple on your church?
It's 10 and 1/2 feet higher.
Okay, I'm, I'll ask two more questions.
Okay.
One, what's the purpose of putting the antenna there? Is there no way to have a small antenna on the steeple? And, I don't know, it might be a religious thing or this and that. I'm just going to.
No, it's not a religious thing. It's an engineering thing. The, we had to submit this to a radio engineer, and they put together.
to a radio engineer and they put together all the information that we needed, told us we needed. They actually asked for a tri-fold antenna that looked like an antenna and they wanted it 90 feet, but we talked to staff. Staff recommended a single pole antenna. That's going to cost us about $15,000 more than we were originally going to pay. And then they asked us to lower it to 70 feet and our air engineer said 70 feet would work, but it wouldn't work on the fiberglass steeple that we have. It is hidden behind the steeple and behind the building.
One, well, just a couple more comments. I'm sorry. Chairman, if I may, why the antenna and why not broadcast via podcast or internet-based? It has a larger reach.
We do have internet. We do have iPads or iPods available, all that, all that stuff. I'm sort of technically challenged, but we do have that. We've just been working on getting a FM frequency from the federal government for the last 23 years and we finally got one. And you need to have this antenna in order to be able to do that.
And I don't even know if this would even be possible. Staff, I'm sure will yell at me here in a second if it's not possible, but is there any way to restrict this from ever having cellphone towers mounted on this?
Oh, we don't intend to ever use it for a cell tower and you can put that in restrictions if you want.
Okay, thank you. No further questions.
I have a few questions. When you say it's hidden behind the steeple, it's only hidden if you're.
That's right.
Facing exactly the right way.
That's right. If you're walking around, you'll see it, but it is about 30 feet behind, well, our auditorium is 30 feet, so it's actually about 10 foot behind where our auditorium is. But it's as close to the building and as hidden as we possibly could make it.
So I want to follow up on something that Commissioner Schlotman said, and that is, you know, and I understand you've been waiting for a long time for permission to get this FM station, but in the meantime, technology has advanced forward and it seems to me that there is a, both a less restrictive and less expensive way to accomplish your intended goal, which is to relay your sermons to members of the public who may not be able to be there that day. Is that correct?
Yes, we do this through, through the internet right now. We have an internet, an internet site. People can come and watch us and we broadcast through the internet around the world, but we want an FM station here, a 24-hour FM station, to broadcast not just our, our church message, but for other churches within the valley to be able to broadcast. And so it's a 24-hour FM station. It'll be on 101.1 FM. It's a low-powered FM station.
And if that's the goal, and I appreciate that, couldn't that be done with a relay? You know, putting the, because we're, I mean, my concern is we're putting a radio tower in a residential area. You know, you've got neighbors who are going to be looking out their windows and in their yards, looking up at, you know, not a steeple, but a radio tower that's even taller than the steeple. And it seems to me that you may be able to relay that, that broadcast to an area that has less impact on a, on a neighborhood.
That would be a possibility. The problem with that is, is the expense of purchasing the property and getting the tower and getting all of that done. It's going to be a considerable more expense than what we're looking at.
Okay. All right. I'm just, I'm having a hard time finding that this is compatible with the surrounding areas, so I'm anxious to hear from anyone else who might, might want to speak on this. Commissioner Truesdale?
Yeah. You know, 10 feet out, you know, if this was not part of the regular, the spire of the church, I'd see it, but it is another antenna and it's, it's not the typical antenna we would be talking about, which is residential communication. This is, this is a broader thing. And we've had other antennas come before us that, and there's a few that are in, they're where they are today and we can't do a thing about them. One on Buffalo, it's a huge antenna site, not much taller than what you're talking about here, but it's this guy-wired antenna. I know you talked about relays, but from what I understand, there's, there's a fairly economical fiber option that would connect you with one of the antenna sites within the valley that are, where you would be attended on somebody's antenna and broadcast, like most of the, most all of the radio stations do. And my biggest concern here is we have a lot of radio stations in this valley and in the core of the city, I know tons of them that may, would look at what I'm doing out on this mountain or out on that mountain or whatever, maybe different, why don't I build an antenna on my property? And this, this being in the residential location it is, creates some problems. Is it possible, and I don't want to delay you because I'd like to say you've, you've been very candid. You've been 23 years trying to get a license and you've got it and you want to develop it. I understand that, but.
But could I also mention this, that in our original application before the city, we, we put on, on our original application 23 years ago that we were going to put a radio tower and it was approved 23 years ago.
I bet you not many of those houses were out there 23 years ago.
No, we were the only thing out there.
And I don't want to do this, but I'd love to see you hold this for 30 days and let us take a look at, at a little further if that's possible, if you'd be in agreement with that.
Well, we're here to, to be a help to the city, not to fight the city in any way.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we, we do the right thing on this and I don't, I have no, no problem with what your desires is the church to run the station. I think that's a, I think it's a great opportunity for your church. I really do. I just am very concerned that we have rooftops all the way around you and I'm, I want to make sure we do the right thing.
Before you make that motion.
Okay.
I think we have some other commissioners who want to speak. Sure, go ahead.
Thank you. I was in this neighborhood today. As a matter of fact, I was in here just before coming up here. My son had to play at Calvary around the corner for a basketball game. So I wrote to this neighborhood. One thing I looked at is the opposition. I don't see much opposition. I know this is a mature neighborhood. When you look at it, this church fronts Lake Mead, which is a major thoroughfare, and both on the north and south side of Lake Mead is primarily commercial. I would have some of those reservations if you were, if your church was set back into a neighborhood, but you're sitting next to a detention basin, you've got a church there, you've got some residential around there, but the thing that I don't see is a lot of opposition out here. Had this been advertised as a cell tower, a cell tower for what it was, I think you'd have a lot of opposition from your neighbor. But I think the fact that you've been in there 23 years, I think the neighbors know this church. It's evident by the residents and church members that are out here now. And so I don't want to delay the Lord's work any more than I have to. And so with that, I am ready to support it and make a motion and follow staff's recommendation.
Okay. Is that your motion?
That would be my motion for approval of item 34, SDR 57890, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions. I think you waited 23 years and, you know, let the church say amen.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, to the motion maker, is that subject to no cellphone towers going on this in the future?
I can amend my motion to add a condition. I know the pastor has already said on the mic that he can support that, so if that would be the pleasure of an addition, I would add that to the motion.
Hang on one sec. Let's, let's hear from the city attorney.
Chairman, I didn't hear the actual motion. I'm sorry.
Yeah, the motion or the comment suggested by the vice chair was that we amend and add a condition that no cell tower be added as part of this. And I want to make sure that's something we can do before we make a vote.
You know, the federal government has kind of almost tied our hands with regard to certain, you know, cell towers and radio towers and things of that nature, which may be used for emergency response purposes. But if the applicant's willing to give it up, that's, that's fine with me, so.
Okay. All right. So the motion is for approval with an additional condition that no cell tower ever be added to this site. Please vote. Please post. That motion carries. Item 34 is approved.
Mr. Chairman, this item will be heard at the city council meeting on April 15th, 2015.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to directors business. Item 36, DIR 57816. The applicant is KAG Property LLC. The owner is KAG Development South LLC. For discussion and possible action on a request regarding an amendment to the development agreement for the Kyle Canyon development at the southwest corner of Fort Apache Road and Moccasin Road in Ward 6. Staff recommends approval. Will we please have the staff report?
Mr. Chairman, this amendment will constitute the Second Amendment to the originally approved development agreement in 2007. A master developer's proposal to amend the effective development agreement reflects the changes in growth and development conditions, as well as the changes in certain infrastructure projects that have either been completed or revised in their scope. These amendments include the following major changes of the previous approved development agreement. The rebranding of the master plan community from Kyle Canyon to Sky Canyon. The introduction of an alternate fire station contribution language to allow for either a 4.1 million contribution or the dedication of land and construction of a fire station within the community. The elimination and replacement of the parent final map and associated triggers and requirements, and requirements with the development phase maps and associated requirements and triggers have been added. The amendment of the development agreement to extend the time in which the master developers to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Clark County School District. The amendment of the master land use plan to allow for an approximate 23% reduction in medium-low land use designations and approximately 10% and 66% increase in medium-low and low land use designation acreage respectively. The amendment of the master land use plan for the relocation of the proposed education facilities, being elementary, medical, and high schools within the community. The amendment of the master land use plan to illustrate the network of community park locations, as well as potential fire station, as well as the amendment of the park agreement to reflect the new network of community park locations, their associated conceptual drawings and construction commencement triggers. The proposed revisions are in conformance with the goal number three of the Las Vegas 2020 master plan and subsequent objective 3.1, 3.5, and 3.6. The development standards have been reviewed by the City of Las Vegas. Officer sustainability have been found to be in general compliance with the resolution R.176 of 2004. Development standards are also either meet or exceed the requirements of the Unified Development Code pertaining to streetscape design and connectivity, as well as that of the previously approved development agreement. Development generally meets the intent of the traditional neighborhood development, TND, general plan designation, by providing for a mix of housing types, commercial and civic uses within the community. As such, staff is recommending approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. I'm Bob Gronauer, 8345 West Sunset Road. I'm here representing the master developer in this matter. Chris, Mr. Chris Armstrong's here in the audience in case if you have any questions with respect to the development itself. The only thing I want to say is I want to thank your staff, Peter Lowenstein, Tom Perrigo, Lucian, and everybody else, your city attorney's office. We spent many hours on this agreement. We went round and round on many issues, but in the end, we have a document that's before you that's in approvable state. We are already moving forward with development out there with, we have already two builders on board, which is Pulte Homes and Woodside Homes. We're looking in negotiations to close on another deal with another public home builder, so you do have some action up here in the northwest. That being said, we're very excited and again, want to thank all of your staff for working with us on this and we're looking forward to getting this on, onto the city council.
Okay, thank you. I'll open this for public comment. Does anyone wish to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Do any of the commissioners wish to be heard? Commissioner Quinn.
Thank you. Mr. Gronauer, Mr. Armstrong, what I, what I love about a Gary Goett project, where his name's on something, you already got the firehouse, you already got the green space, you already got the greatest community center, you've got the schools. He leaves no screw unturned and it's, this is going to be the greatest little development down there because I know he's going to put his heart and soul into it like he did out at Southern Highlands and it's with great pleasure that I welcome this and you'll see my support tonight.
I'll just add that I'm also excited to see this move forward and you'll see my support on this tonight.
Mr. Chair, through you, yeah, this has been a couple of years. I'm making a lot more than that, but a couple of years ago when I seen this, I didn't think that we'd see movement on it so quick. And hearing that tractors are already moving, moving dirt and a lot of builders wanting to start building, this is a great, great, going to be a great project and a great part in town, so, thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make the motion.
Please do.
Thank you. I'd like to make the motion of approval of DIR 57816, following all staff's recommendations for the Kyle Canyon development and agreement this evening. Thank you.
Motion is to approve item 36, following staff's recommendation. Please vote. Please post. That motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, item 36 will be heard at the city council meeting on April 15th, 2015.
I know we've been going a while, but we've only got a few items left, so if you can hold out instead of a break, we'll carry on. Item 37, TXT 55063. The applicant owner is the City of Las Vegas. For possible discussion and possible action on a request to amend the Lone Mountain Master Plan permitted use table to combine restaurant uses and add the shopping center use and provide for other related matters. Staff recommends approval. Will we please have staff's report?
Mr. Chairman, in reviewing the Lone Mountain Master Plan, we discovered probably a Scribner's error that didn't allow small restaurants unless they had a drive-through. So if you were a restaurant of less than 2,000 square feet, you weren't allowed unless you put a drive-through in. And we felt that was probably just an error. So we'd like to allow small restaurants without drive-throughs in the Lone Mountain Plan. In addition, we saw some other opportunities to make some corrections. Since the adoption of the Lone Mountain Plan, we've adopted a standard for parking lot, for parking lots for shopping centers of 20,000, 25,000 square feet. And this would allow that use to be part of that so that you can park at the shopping center rate of 1 for 250 instead of 1 for 175, reducing the amount of required parking for large developments. Also, we noted that we had two uses regarding craft work and craft and work, and we're combining that to match Title 19. So this will clean up those issues. Craft work's not on here on your display, but that's another one we're amending as part of this, is to eliminate one of the craft works within the code. So this will clean it up and make it easier to read and allow those 2,000-square-foot restaurants without drive-throughs.
Okay, thank you. I'll open this for public comment. Does anyone wish to be heard either for or against this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment and see if there's any discussion amongst the planning commissioners. How about a motion?
Yes, Chairman, on TXT 55063, I'd move to approve following staff's recommendation for approval.
Motion is to approve item 37. Please vote. That motion carries. Item 37 is approved.
Mr. Chairman, this item will be forwarded to the city council in ordinance form.
Now, I've been keeping track and with Commissioner Schlotman's niece is here. He has three words he can explain to them tonight. Scribner, Knit, and Porte Cocheur. Three words, or at least maybe four, you don't always hear. All right. Item 38, TXT 57758. The applicant owner is the City of Las Vegas. For possible discussion and possible action on a request to amend LVMC Las Vegas Municipal Code, Chapter 19.18, related to definitions and measures, by amending the definition of second-hand dealer and to provide for other related matters. Staff recommends approval. Staff report.
Mr. Chairman, once again, we bring another cleanup bill. Title 6 was amended regarding second-hand dealers. The, I have passed out a revised staff report to you because as we were going through this, we found some other items that we would like to address. Basically, this would bring Title 19 in conformance with Title 6, wearing apparel and the selling of infant child items and. and the selling of infant child items and general household furnitures like cups and dishes would no longer require the special use permit, and it does add precious or semi-precious gemstones to be part of that second-hand dealer SUP. So the amendment goes a little further than the staff report you currently have. We did this last week and didn't quite do that. We did do a comparison of the other jurisdictions, what they do with second-hand dealers. Clark County and Henderson are pretty much comparable to our old code. We've made some changes to our second-hand dealers, still concentrating on those large appliances and furnitures that caused the nuisance problems. North Las Vegas, for note, though, treats all second-hand dealers as just retail. You know, outside display and storage is prohibited in all parts of the city except along Main Street, except in conjunction with a parking lot sale, which you can do so many times a year through a temporary commercial permit. This ordinance, this change, and with the text amendment that I left on the dais for you to refer to, does bring us into more conformance with Title VI, and will make it easier for those second-hand dealers, which don't have secondary impacts, clothing, strollers, cups and dishes, to be sold as a second-hand dealer without having to come through a public hearing.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'll open this for public comment. Do any members of the public wish to be heard for or against this item? Seeing none, I will close the public comment. Do any commissioners wish to be heard on this item?
No, I'm ready to make a motion.
Please do, Commissioner.
I'll make a motion of text amendment 57758, to follow all staff's recommendations for this text amendment. Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. Motion is to approve item thirty-eight. Please vote. Please post. That motion carries. Item thirty-eight is approved.
Mr. Chairman, this item will go forward in ordinance form to the city council, and I just want to note thanks to Mr. Steve Swanton and not Mr. Lowenstein for this text amendment. So he can have Friday off, and Mr. Lowenstein will, I'll give a task to during Friday.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to citizens' participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the planning commission. No subject may be acted upon by the planning commission unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. I see none. Therefore, I'm going to turn the meeting over to the vice chairman to close our meeting.
Very good. All right, I'm going to turn it over to my two cousins from Texas, and at the end of the meeting, we grab this and we slam the gavel down. So both of y'all girls want to grab that?
Say, "Meeting adjourned."
And say, "Meeting adjourned," and hit it.
Meeting adjourned.
Speak into the mic.
Meeting adjourned.
There you go.
Thank you.